All the meeting to order, you would join me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, you have entrusted us as stewards of your creation. Please guide our hearts as we make our decisions. We seek you first in all we do together. We ask you to bless the people coming here to do the people's business. May we, as you stew- as your stewards, be always mindful of their service and our trust is in you. Amen.
Okay. Uh, before we begin, we have two additions from the original printed agenda. Item seven E, a fee donation request from Orange Baptist Church. And item ten C, a letter of commendation for Embry-Riddle Aeronautical University. Are there any other changes to the agenda?
I have seven F, and it would be, um, a request to VDOT to, um, do a study of restricting truck traffic on six forty-six.
Where is six forty-six?
It's Lovers Lane Road in, um, Portonville.
Okay. Any other modifications? In case I would look for a motion to approve as it modified.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five oh. Uh, consent agenda, could I get a motion for that?
Motion approved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. That brings us to public appearances, and first is the business spotlight, Ralph Short, owner of Wealth Preservers.
This will be a new experience for me because usually when I'm talking to give seminars, I'm walking. Right Jim?
Absolutely Ralph, we're gonna chain you to the podium so you can't move around too much.
That's right. Thank you all for taking the time out to invite us because, uh, the board directors for providing the business owners of the Orange County to, uh, have this platform to speak from their experience and heart over the issues that affecting our community. My name's Ralph Short, owner and founder of Wealth Preservers, uh, back in nineteen ninety-one, which is a full-service consult- financial consulting firm. Um, one of the things that I like to do, they established it in Lynchburg, and people say, "Why are you here in Orange?" Well, when you're married and you got two kids under five years old and, uh, the first contract that I got when I got in this business was at Liberty University, and the people decided that, uh, they didn't want to have one person to handle that contract. Uh, I decided it was time to move on. My wife, I started moving up, uh, doing a lot of business up in Northern Virginia, and she said, "You go from Monday to, uh, Friday away." So, we need to change it. So that's why I'm here in, in Orange County. Uh, basically, if you don't know who I am or what I do, what I try to do is, a financial consulting company to business owners, is help them explain what it is they have. I empower business owners, their families, uh, their key employees to understand what their business is doing for them. It is an income-producing asset, and sooner or later, you're gonna have to turn that asset into cash. That's what I specialize in particularly for business owners. I handle the investment side, I handle the insurance side, key employee benefits, programs, things of that. I show people until this year as to the, uh, how to finance medical, uh, financing options. Uh, with the new, uh, things that we're dealing with now, it's gonna be a new environment for all of us at this time and stage. Uh, because one of the things I talk to business owners about is, "Why did you start this business? Did you start this business to pay Uncle Sam more taxes? Did you start this business to become overnight millionaires? Or did you produce, wanted to produce income for your family, doing things that you wanted to do without the man telling you how to do it?" So, that's kinda what I do. Um, been in this business since eighty-five, I started the company in ninety-one. Uh, and we've seen a lot of changes over the past thirty years. Our industry has changed from small-town value to global ventures. And what I mean by that? Um, we've gone from trying to advise clients how to improve their lives to more or less product peddling. What I try and do is bring it back to Main Street. Uh, and like I say, oh, in two thousand and eight, what happened? A lot of changes happened. Market went down, uh, people didn't know what to do. Small business is the heart and soul of any community. Okay? And it will always be that way. We produce more jobs, okay? The thing is, we have to live on Main Street. We don't live on Wall Street. My clients go, range from New York City, Rochester, down to Key West. I have some clients in, in California and Texas because of the things that I do for them. They range in size anywhere from two people, particularly in the agriculture side, up to two hundred and fifty to three hundred. There are single mothers, there are farmers, there are small businesses that you see everywhere. Um, it's, the size of the portfolio does not matter when I talk to a client. It's the person behind the portfolio. We have to understand what it is they want to do. Uh, my approach has always been simple and straightforward with strategic, manageable, uh, steps. You may ask how this is accomplished? Basically, by asking questions. What are you trying to accomplish? What do you want to do? Because until you know where you want to go, you can't be directed to get there. Okay? And one of the things I always try to do is, is give some examples of why it's important that you need to understand what this is all about. Investments are sexy. Everybody wants to talk about investments. But until you have that foundation set up, you won't get there. Because the first death claim I ever paid was my best friend. That's when I knew I was in this business. It wasn't to make zillions of dollars and talk about investments all the time. If you're not protected at that point when you need it, you may not have it. A lot of the things that, um, I'll ask people is, "Does your investment advisor really know who you are and what you're wanting to do? Do they know the demons that you're facing and what you're keeping up at night staring at the ceiling? Have they ever asked you about coming over with a concrete strategy for dealing with the death and disability of you or your business? Because understand one thing, that your business plan and your personal plan as a small business owner, they're very much interrelated. So you've gotta have everything in place. Um, and most importantly is, if a key employee leaves you, have you, do you have a plan that will maintain that business after that happens? One of the things I'll talk to people about is, the financial services industry has been transformational over the next last five or six years. If you think it's been fast-paced in the last few years, wait till the next five years. Because with all the new regulations and stuff, it's, it's very important for you to understand. The amount of, um, progress that we're gonna see, if you call it progress, there'll be another, uh, transformation within our industry. Uh, one that will hopefully benefit the, the clients, not merely the corporate strategies and captive agents. So, the vision for my, our future here is to expand from the two or three employees that I have now to about five to six. Um, and hopefully continue to do business here in this area because most of my clients are outside of the Orange County because of how I travel. Um, I do several seminars over four or five state areas, uh, contract with some banks. Um, and the other things that, that we will do from here on out, uh, is gonna impress some people. Okay? Um, my specialty is listening to the clients and to decide what, let them tell me what they want to do, and then I'll guide them to, to get to that point. And one of the things I always end up with is a quote that I thoroughly enjoy when I talk to business owners is, it's from Mr. Forbes, it goes, "If you don't drive your business, you will be driven out of business." Okay? Any questions or anything?
Ralph is my personal psychiatrist.
What, what I've got over here, it's been passed out, is one of the pro- national programs I use when I talk to business owners in addition to the Business Killer Seminar because in call paper, I'm no- I'm known for, "What if I don't want to do this anymore?" Okay? So, I thought I'd leave that with y'all, and it takes a few minutes for you to read it, and, uh, hope you enjoy it. Okay?
Thanks.
Thanks Ralph.
Okay. Uh, next, introduction of Governor's School Legacy Project, Evan Baines.
Hello everyone. Um, I'd like to thank the board for having me first. Um, my name is Evan Baines. Um, I'm a senior at Orange County High School. Um, I'm also a student in the Blue Ridge Virtual Governor's School. And as a senior in the Blue Ridge Virtual Governor's School, uh, we are to come up with a, uh, a project to work on during, throughout our senior year. Um, and, uh, as, for, for my project, I actually focused on, uh, employment discrimination against lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender individuals. Um, and as part of my project, I would like to introduce to you a non-discrimination ordinance. Uh, that with, uh, the help of Mr. Lackney over here, um, which I'd like to thank him for his help, I drafted. Um, section two of this ordinance, uh, would prohibit discrimination in housing, employment, public accommodations, credit, and education in, uh, Orange County on the basis of, of the following: race, color, religion, uh, someone's biological sex, sexual orientation, gender id- or gender identity, uh, pregnancy, childbirth, childbirth or related medical conditions, national origin, age, marital status, or disability. Uh, for my project, I studied pretty extensively, uh, in the area of employment discrimination. Um, I learned a lot about, a lot about this subject. Um, we've actually seen recently that, uh, our new governor has signed, uh, executive order number one when he took office, which, uh, protected all of these classes, including sexual orientation and gender identity, identity, uh, when it comes to state employment here in Virginia. Um, uh, studies have shown that about forty-two percent of lesbian, gay, bisexual individuals and fifty-seven percent of transgender individuals have experienced some sort of discrimination, uh, in employment. There are seventeen states in the United States and the District of Columbia who, um, have LGBT-inclusive anti-discrimination laws. Um, and while there's no national or state law here in Virginia to prohibit discrimination based on sexual orientation or gender identity, um, uh, therefore this, the section two of this ordinance would likely be deemed, uh, unenforceable until a national or state law covered those bases. Um, however, there are thirteen localities here in Virginia who do support, uh, LGBT protections in employment. Um, and actually, one of those is in Charlotte's, is Charlottesville, Virginia, um, pretty close by, and I actually worked with the Charlottesville Office on Human Rights during my project. Um, I believe that this ordinance would show that Orange County supports these kind of protections for those discriminated, uh, against. And I also believe that it'll set an example for our businesses and our citizens, and will show that Orange welcomes everyone, and our county is a home for tolerance, acceptance, and fairness. Um, if you all have any questions, I would gladly try to answer them.
You said the governor signed an executive order dealing with this. Does that just deal with state employers or does that all govern?
Yes, yes, that's all state, state employment for everything.
State employment only, okay, thank you. Any questions? Thank you Evan.
Thank you, Mr. Goodman.
Okay. And last public appearance would be the finance quarterly report. Glenda, I found a million dollars. Bradley.
A million?
We need more than that.
You might as well go ahead, just go big or go home.
Okay, uh, a hundred and eighty million?
I'd like to be able to stand up here and say that, I really would. Um, I guess everybody has received their copy of the quarterly report, um, through the end of December. Um, and looking over it, um, and I tried to remind you of where we ended fiscal thirteen, in terms of our fund balance, that we were at about eighteen point two million, which was at about twenty-two point four percent of expenditures when calculated in accordance with our policy. Um, however, we did do some large carry-forwards from FY thirteen, which took that available fund balance right back down uh, to now seventeen point five seven percent. Um, and the general fund revenues are up from the previous year by six and a half percent, and expenditures were also up by seven percent. Um, property tax, um, has grown by about two percent, and, uh, that's pretty good. I think in Davenport's last projections, they used one percent a year.
When, when you say that, uh, that it's up, is that, uh, based upon, uh, what is collected? Or is that based on what's actually due?
That is based on what has been collected so far at the end of December, com- when compared to last year.
Okay, alright.
Um, sales tax, uh, we've been watching pretty closely, um, due to the opening of Walmart, and, um, I had four months to look at that should include the Walmart, um, impact, and we have, um, seen an increase that averages seventeen percent a month. Uh, if that rate were to continue for the rest of the year, we would have, um, sixty-six point nine thousand more than what I had budgeted for the current year. So that looks, um, strong. The whole area of, uh, other local taxes seems to be the area where we have any kind of, um, significant natural growth. It's about six percent in that area, and, uh, you can see that we have some ups and some downs. Um, but mostly, that's our strongest area, I think, in terms of, um, seeing a little growth in our revenues is other local taxes. Our building permit revenue was down, um, but it's picking up in the spring, and I think part of the reason it was down was probably the Walmart building permit that happened in the same period of time in the previous year. Um, charges for service is up by twenty-one percent. Um, the miscellaneous category reflects a large increase. Um, however, there was a, an adjustment every year, we have to mark to market, they call it, for our investments, and we basically true up things to their market value at the end of the year. So, that kinda skewed that number a little bit. Um, in the general fund, expenditures look, um, fairly on target with our budget estimates. There weren't a whole lot of categories, uh, when I did the year-to-year comparison that even needed an explanation. Um, they just, you know, there weren't that many that seemed different than where you would expect them to be. Um, however, the whole public service, I mean, public safety category is running a little ahead, and that they're at like fifty-two percent at mid-year, and, and part of that is gonna be attributed to, um, large expenses that just happen once a year and happen to be in the first half of the year. So, uh, but we are watching that one. Let's see, um, other funds, the school, um, operating fund had used about forty-one and a half percent of our local funds. And on page eighteen, you can see that they have eleven point nine million left to draw down for the year. Um, social services fund, um, looks very similar to the previous year, forty-two percent of, uh, of collected revenues and fifty-five percent of budgeted appropriations. The debt service fund is, um, one that is funded strictly by the transfer from the general fund, and sixty-eight point two percent had been spent by the end of December, and that's strictly a function of the due dates of those bond payments. But we have quite a few that are due in December. Um, capital projects fund, um, at this time, we have total appropriations in our capital projects fund of three and a half million, and we've spent about twenty point eight percent of the, of that amount. There are, uh, several projects that are in the process of procurement, and they have, um, an encumbrance out there or something like that, but the detail is there for you by the project, so you can see if there's one you particularly are interested in tracking. Uh, both the la- the airport and landfill funds, um, look like they're on target with the budget. Our cash, um, continues to show the very same trend that we have seen, um, over the past several years. Um, it is down a little, uh, you know, the total cash balance available at the end of December just due to the use of fund balance as for fiscal thirteen, we did end up, uh, dipping into our fund balance by about a million dollars. Um, also, I have included again the juvenile centers, um, report that they do at the end of the quarter, and we are still, um, running below their estimate on our usage of that facility, so I'm hoping that will hold and continue, um, through the year. Are there any particular questions about the report? Or since it's sort of a new format, any suggestions that you have, I would be happy to take and try to incorporate. Um, I, I've tried to run them, the reports in different ways, um, just to give you a sample of what, what we can report on, you know?
How difficult would it be to graph over a period of five or six years, uh, some of the various, uh, larger expenditure categories in our budget?
Not hard at all.
One of the things that's, I've been thinking about the budget is, is looking at what we've done in the past and how things have, uh, changed, uh, and whether or not that would be for, let's say, things like the, uh, fire in EMS or, uh, schools or any of the other things, uh, to, to graph those uh, against, uh, some other things like inflation, uh, number of population, number of students, things like that.
Right. Uh, it wouldn't be hard to do that. Um, and I just, because I've been working with the, um, that kind of information for the budget presentation that'll be Thursday, I mean, it's clear that, you know, by far, the county's largest expenditures are in the area of public safety number one, or education number one and public safety number two.
The other, the other element is, uh, some of the capital items are not necessarily, uh, uh, part of the operating thing, but in fact, they really are when I'm buying, uh, ambulances or, or police cars. Uh, and be able to, uh, graph that into the same kind of thing, so when I'm looking at, at, let's say, the sheriff, I'm looking at all the costs associated with that. Is that feasible as well?
Sure.
Okay.
I'll have to do that.
Do you get any, on the, uh, capital items budget, do you, I'm just looking at the, uh, two columns called it, that you labeled expended and encumbrances versus the available budget. Do, do you get any kind of a report, uh, at any point during the year that tells us, uh, whether or not we're gonna finish some of these projects or whether it's gonna be a carryover? Because the, e- except for some, well, there's one, the ambulance, but other than that, they're mostly small items that have been, uh, either expended or encumbered so far. So there's a fairly substantial amount of money still there, but there's no indication whether we're on track or whether there's, uh, we're gonna be faced with carryovers. But, uh, do you, do you track that or get any report?
Uh, there, there's not really, um, what I would call a formal method in place, but, um, of course, with procurement, uh, being part of the finance department, you know, I'm aware a lot of times that procurement is happening for a particular project. The other thing is, um, through our meetings with department heads, um, annually, you know, with the budget, this is always, uh, you know, point that we go over is, where are you with this project? Um, you know, what kind of timeframe can we expect? But, um, the way the appropriation policy is written, you know, they automatically carry forward. So sometimes it is, um, you know, there'll be a balance there, and, um, it's not clear whether the project is finished and now that is an available balance because it's automatically gonna come forward. So, um, that is something that I've been working with, um, Mr. David on, and to incorporate, you know, some things into the budget where we can really study what we have here, um, in our existing capital fund.
There's also, I mean, one item, the, the, this water reserve number, there was no new money put into that, I don't think, but there's a, there's money that's been carried forward year after year. And best of my knowledge, we don't have any specific plans as to what to do with that. I don't know if there are other.
We have in the past.
Picked a little out of it.
Yeah. True. Um, okay, it, there's, there's a lot of information there, but it, it's some categorization of it, uh, could, might be helpful that, going forward, it's, uh, it's interesting to see what, how we're progressing.
We actually used it to fund some of the, uh, or to, as part of the funding stream that we didn't have, so. Appropriate place for a water fund.
Recession has, has, has hit a lot of local governments in going into some of these capital projects that were, were funded as a page you go, and a little bit each year. I think in, in our development of this year's budget recommendation, it certainly became apparent to me, Glenda, was helpful, that there are, uh, some sums of money that have been allocated for certain projects that are, uh, haven't gotten to the full, I guess, amount. And, and one of the things that, uh, certainly be very appropriate is, kinda go through and scrub it and see what's there, what has a chance of going forward, and if it doesn't, then maybe dropping all that into the capital projects fund and kinda revisiting that, uh, in your long-term financial plan, maybe a way of freeing up some of those dollars.
Well, and some of it might be just shifting time. If we, if the project is not going to happen for the next year or two, we should at least consider whether or not to use that money for, for another project of, of an equal or higher priority. I, I don't know that there's a lot of that, but to the extent there is, it'd be nice to have that discussion at least.
Well, I think you've got, you've got some things you gotta fund every year practically.
Oh, a lot of things.
And so, uh, uh, that becomes a, sort of a steady stream. And then you've got these spikes for big things like nine-one-one centers and communications and a few other things. So if we can get the, the general just to flow, then the, then the question comes, do you want to save for that, uh, spike, put money out of fund? Or do you want to just, uh, take it in the year when the time comes that you have to pay it?
Yeah.
Any more questions? Thank you.
Thank you Glenda. Okay, uh, next we have a public comment. Anyone signed up?
Yes sir, Mr. Jerrym, we have three speakers signed up.
Okay.
Versus Mary Beth Roland, representing Locust Grove Primary School, PTA.
Hi. Um, I'm Mary Beth, I'm from Locust Grove Primary School, PTA, and I wanted to step before you tonight and urge you to support the school budget as it was presented, um, the other evening. I know that Mr. Bennettfield and Dr. Remesey laid out an enormous amount of information as to what they needed and why. Um, but I thought I'd speak on behalf of some of our parents tonight to tell you that some of the most important things in there are the retention of our teachers, who we love and think are phenomenal, um, and we are afraid of losing if the surrounding counties continue to provide more competitive salaries for them. And the opening of the vacant school in Locust Grove. It is the number one issue that I'm asked about, um, when I'm out and about. Um, our parents are extremely, um, concerned about, uh, the future of their children as they share that one building. Having two schools in one building is problematic on a number of different levels, not only schedules, but, um, you know, my daughter, when she goes to different classes, because she has some upstairs, she has to be escorted by an adult in different places in the school, and that provides a little bit of discomfort. It's a little bit odd for a child to have to be escorted to different places in the school. Because what is normal and appropriate for an eighth grader to discuss in the hallway may not be normal and appropriate for a third or fourth grader to hear in a hallway. Um, and that's some of the, um, concerns that we have.
How much of that, uh, escorting goes on?
She takes, I think, just one class upstairs. Um, she's in the gifted program, and so when she goes upstairs, um, she's with an adult. But there's a lot of, um, of problems with pro- scheduling, programming and things, uh, amongst the schools. And Mr. Magutter and Ms. Crandall have done a phenomenal job. But those students that moved there in third grade for a temporary, um, combination are now graduating out of elementary school. And will now, they've spent their entire elementary school appear, um, experience sharing a school with the middle school. Um, and I think we have a real chance this year to provide them with their own school, their own space. Um, and I know that you have support in our county to do that. So I'm going to urge you, if you need to, advertise a tax increase. I think you'd be surprised at how many people will support it. Um, I know nobody is really excited to hear those words. I work two part-time jobs and I would look forward to seeing a tax increase advertised. Um, so I'm going to ask you that, um, that you consider that, um, it's great that we're bringing more businesses to the Orange County, but we want our kids to be able to own those businesses. We want them to create the jobs. We don't want them to be, um, lacking when they have to compete for college vocational schools, uh, for other jobs so that they're stuck at entry level. And I think starting now with their education, we can provide them with that competitive, um, opportunity to really make successes of themselves and bring more to the county in general. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Second speaker is Kevin Gillum, two zero one seven six Mountain Track Road.
Good afternoon. Uh, I wanted to, to speak towards the budget also. Uh, I am here to support the proposed budget from the school board for the next fiscal year. Um, I was actually stunned when I was looking through it to see there were a hundred and thirty first of a hundred and thirty-two school divisions for expenditures and operations. I'm not enough of a technical budget guy to, to know that, but I know one thirty-first out of one thirty-second means we're not spending money there, which either means our school board's doing a real good job conserving funds there or we need to fund it more. I'm not sure which one, but I, I did think when I saw that, that ought to give us a little room to do something. Um, and I've taught, I teach at Orange High School now, and I've attended or taught at eight different school systems over my life. And I've visited dozens of others over the years. And I've seen nothing, uh, in my six years at Orange that would prevent us from being the absolute best school system around. We've got fabulous, uh, faculty, staff, students, parents, we can do this. Uh, but I, I think we won't get there by wishing for it. But we also won't get there simply by throwing money at it. That's, uh, that's too easy of a solution. But I know we won't get there if we don't care and if we cut corners, uh, too much. Uh, and the plan for the physical improvements to the high school, the athletics facility and the academic facilities, uh, was a tremendous first step. Uh, there was some real vision in the room, I was lucky enough to be in there and, uh, people that were really concerned about the kids and having a first-class, uh, school there. Um, and when I was looking at the proposed budget, uh, there are a few things, but I, I really felt like that, that savings plan to down the road over years and decades to, to improve that school was a, a great forward-thinking, uh, part on the school board's, uh, part. I think we need to fund that. Uh, I do have a interest, I have students in the school who run track and my daughter's going to graduate next year. And she will never have got to run a home meet in her high school career. Uh, I don't think we would let that happen to a football player or a basketball player, but it's just track, it seems to be the issue. So I would like to see that track done before my son can run on it one day before he graduates, he's entering next year. Uh, and other things I saw real quickly, I don't want to take too much time, but the virtual learning, that might sound like it's, uh, a luxury, but that is a wave of the future, that's something the Virginia General Assembly is, uh, kind of mandating. Uh, and if we don't stay on top of keeping that infrastructure, we'll get behind, we'll never catch up. Um, there's an early college option that the General Assembly has asked all the schools to do. Uh, I looked into that for my son, who's entering high school next year, and we really need to improve the opportunities. What he would have to go through to take advantage of what the General Assembly would like him to take advantage is a little bit ridiculous. He would have to give up extracurricular activities, drive all the way from Gordonsville to, uh, like Germanna and, and lots of things like that. So if we could improve that, that would be great. Uh, also come from a family of testers. My wife has been in charge of testing in Fluvana County, my father and at a school in Chesterfield. My sister is in charge of testing in Chesterfield. And that item in the budget, the school board, where they say we need somebody in charge of testing. If you haven't been there, you have no idea. Our poor guidance counselors are just overwhelmed and they have so little time to dedicate to the students because they're always shuffling these papers and that would be a great position. Also, uh, there's a position in there for CTE. Uh, not every kid needs to take Shakespeare and plan to go to Harvard. We need CTE, we need, uh, we need plumbers, we need electricians, we need people who can repair computers. Uh, there, those kids are going to make a lot more money than I do one day. So, um, I think CTE's a great thing, but also gifted, uh, kids, gifted kids sometimes get lost in that whole swamp of testing. So a gifted position would be terrific. I can, here to tell you, uh, there's a gifted teacher in a school that saved my, in, at Orange Elementary that saved my son. I, I firmly believe that. And I, I'm really nearly out of time, but I didn't think when I looked at that, that there was any real way. Somebody might look at that and go, boy, that seems like a luxury. That, I really didn't feel that way. I've been in education for twenty-three years and I felt like the things in that budget are critical to us becoming a first-class school system. And, and we are, we are a first-class school system, but I want all of our kids to get the best. Uh, notice I didn't say anything about salaries, that would be a conflict of interest. But all the other stuff, uh, I really, I really do wholeheartedly support that. Uh, but if you do find a million dollars somewhere, you can send it my way. Uh, so, uh, thank you for your time. I would not trade jobs with you and you start working on this budget for anything, I can't imagine what goes into that. But, uh, I do want to, I do want to say that I fully support, uh, full funding for the school board budget, thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Sharon Mormon, President of Orange County.
My name is Sharon Mormon, and I come to you today as an Orange County public school parent for the last twenty-one years. I'm an educator for the last thirty-two years. I represent the Orange County Academic Gifted Advisory Council. And I'm also a gifted specialist at Orange Elementary School. I'm speaking in support of the addition of a gifted position at Orange County High School. The last missing link for a gifted student in Orange County public schools. We currently provide support for gifted students from K through eight. Um, our philosophy in the gifted department is the rising tide lifts every ship. Academic gifted wants the best for every student, and research tells us that when we raise the bar, we are raising that opportunity and increasing the excellence for all students. Best practice also tells us that when we have the opportunity to learn with age-like peers, our students have ample opportunities through these environments. We also knew, know that students learn best with cognitive-like peers. Our students have opportunities at the high school to learn in this environment too. In classes like advanced placement, dual enrollment, Blue Ridge Ritual Governor Schools and various club activities. An academic gifted teacher at the high school would be able to provi- provide these students currently enrolled in these programs with support and also students that are new to these academic environments. One area of weakness that we find in our academic program at the high school is the ability to promote independent learning. An academic gifted teacher would be able to provide support in the content areas for teachers by supplementing existing curriculum with opportunities for internships, independent studies and service learning in our community. For success in this type of learning environment, it is important not to only have a strong structure with which students work, but to build connections between the school and our Orange County community as well as being able to provide regular feedback for those students as to how well they have done in those areas. Other opportunities for an academic gifted teacher at the high school would include strengthening that homeschool connection. I know if you put a note in a kindergartner's backpack, it's very likely to get there. If you put a flyer in a high school student's backpack, it may or may not reach that adult. Um, supporting guidance with scheduling and college career counseling, um, is something that's near and dear to my heart, having had three students graduate from Orange County High School. I know that those guidance counselors are extremely, um, overworked in that area. Encouraging and supporting students to apply for rigorous extracurricular programs like summer regener- regional governor's school, which is very competitive in the state of Virginia. Also providing a link between our school and community organizations like the Orange Rotary Club Speech and Music Contest or our robotic legs, of which both we are very competitive. I'm also here to speak in support of five additional instructional technology resource teachers that are desperately needed in our schools. Our ten schools now share four very talented instructional technology resource teachers who spread themselves very thinly. These instructur- these instructors are responsible for introducing new technology items to our teachers every day. Smartboards, iPads, iPods, clickers, projectors, tablets, as well as the software, the programs and the instruction on how to use these items. Just think about when you get a new phone, a new DVD player, a new television and all the instruction that has to go on to make that device work. Our teachers are sometimes presented with multiple devices, which is a good thing. But they're also required to learn how to use them and to plan lessons for them very quickly. Um, having more resource teachers available and the instructors and the students will allow for immediate assistance on a daily basis. Sometimes if something's not going right, we have to wait for the next day for that resource person to arrive. With new equipment, technology and techniques, responsibility comes with an increased anxiety if teachers are not given the correct and timely support and instruction. With this addition, the anxiety of integrating technology into their less, into their lesson reduces with the assurance that somebody in that building is going to be there to assist them. Our technology team has the ability to communicate and share across the county at their regular meetings and they able to provide assistance to all staff members in our county in a timely fashion. These added positions would also allow approximately sixty to a hundred hours, depending on which SOLs are given at that school that is currently being used for SOL testing prep and administration. That time could be returned to assistant principals, guidance counselors and a music teacher at Gordon Barber for their required responsibilities to our students. Thank you for considering these requests in our two thousand thirteen fourteen budget. And thank you for requi- for helping us meet our twenty-first century teaching requirements.
All right, that was it.
I love it when teachers come in, because I'm telling you, you can pick y'all out from, y'all, y'all, just, you're looking at everybody and you got all this energy and it's just, I just, I do. It's so, I bet you have a lot of response.
And, and they don't need a microphone.
No, they're, they're, they enunciate and they're like making eye contact and they're excited and, you know, that's a good thing.
Okay.
I wasn't making fun, I was being, I was being real, I love it, I mean it's.
All right, we'll move on to board comment, anymore?
No, I just.
Okay. Okay, no board comment? In that case, let's move on to the action items. First one, amendments to the personnel policy manual regarding VH, VRS hybrid employees.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, uh, you were presented with a proposed policy amendment to the county's personnel policy to deal with what are characterized as VRS hybrid employees. These are employees that are hired after January first, two thousand fourteen. Uh, this is a mandate from, uh, our Virginia General Assembly. It requires that all full-time, these class of employees be provided with a short-term disability benefit. Uh, the county attorney, um, human resources manager and finance director worked up a policy. Um, and at that meeting, uh, you took it under advisement. Uh, it really just moves everybody to, uh, this class of employee to a paid time off leave program that includes a short-term disability benefit. You took it under advisement and asked, uh, and I guess I volunteered as well, uh, to, uh, take a look at it because I think there was some interest in discussion on the board of maybe seeing how we might be able to offer this short-term disability, this, uh, paid time off, uh, program to all full-time bill employees, particularly those other tier-one, tier-two employees that are called, as they're characterized, those that are hired before January first of two thousand fourteen. Uh, the, uh, I, I was able to, uh, work, uh, with, uh, Director of Finance and, and our human resources managers and also met with our, uh, insurance advisors. It appears that making a paid time off program available to all employees as an opt-in, uh, is impractical uh, because of the fact that the insurance underwriters, the raiders would not know the universe. It would be hard to, to calculate how many people during the, uh, enroll, open enrollment period would do this and then be able to set a premium. There's also some issues with adverse selection, meaning healthy people would migrate to this, uh, more so than, than, uh, those that, that may not be, uh, 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 may be, it's adverse selection. I, I'm still not really in clarity enough to articulate what that really is in this context. Um, also, the, uh, it would probably be advisable at this time for you all to adopt the policy as it's presented. Um, and that you keep the current sick leave and accrual and use policy in place at this time for all others employees. That's not to say that we can't revisit this at some point down the road. But right now, we're in this window that employees are being hired that are subject to this and we need to put this in place so that they know, uh, the terms and conditions of their, their employment and that there's short-term disabilities in place. So that's my first recommendation. The second recommendation is that during our assessment, and this was something I think everybody else knew, but I, I got up to speed, is that about, uh, forty percent of our employees, those hired before January first, have, um, what I would say extremely low sick leave balances. And, and what that really means is that if for some reason they have to, they're ill, they're out of work, um, they will go through their balances fairly quickly. Some of these are only several days or a week. We do have a, uh, an ability for them to use their annual leave, but then again, if they're having low balances on their sick leave, there may be corresponding low balances on their annual leave. Then there is a sick leave bank so that other employees can donate time to that employee until they get back to work. What that does, it does interject, uh, a high degree of financial uncertainty for the infected employee because they have to go in their state of disability, so to speak, and solicit and have others on their behalf solicit donation of sick leave. Our county's insurance advisors recommended that if we funded a long-term disability program, this would be a free benefit that would kick in on the ninety-first day out so that they, they would be paid sixty percent of their salary ninety-one, ninety-one days and after until they get back to work. The insurance carriers that provide the service are, are very motivated to have the employee come back to work. So they're willing to do what they, as far as additional business, uh, benefits, as far as accommodations at work to have the employee return, just like we as the employer want them to return, uh, when they're able to. The cost is, uh, between thirty and forty thousand dollars. Um, I've asked that our advisors prepare a briefing document and bring that, uh, come and present that to you at the, at the March meeting just so you'd be better informed about this and then certainly can take this up as part of your budget deliberations. So the first action would be to adopt the policy for the hybrid employees as drafted. And the second is to, uh, take the long-term, uh, disability for all employees under advisement until the advisors, uh, come.
Let me ask you a question about the, uh, the long-term. Does this, in other words, if somebody is permanently unable to work, so they continue to draw sixty percent of their pay forever?
I'm looking at Glenn to help me with the, the difference between this and VRS disability.
The way I understand it is that, um, if you're not ever available to come back to work, if you're not ever going to be able to come back to work, then the VRS benefit for retirement disability is available to you. But, um, that is extremely hard to get and you pretty much have to have a doctor say that you will never come back to work. And, um, so, you know, I've heard stories of that being even harder to get appro- And so, you know, I've heard stories of that being even harder to get approved than social security, you know, disability. But nevertheless, that is a benefit that's there now for Plan One and Plan Two employees. These hybrid employees will not have access to that because we're being required to buy them short and long-term disability. So for the Plan One and Plan Twos, the question is, well, we're having a more and more difficult time. People don't want, don't seem to want to participate in sick leave bank as much as they used to. Karen says she has.
It wasn't so much that, as I was saying, we're talking about adding a new benefit.
Benefit.
And how is that comparable to the hybrids?
Well, the hybrids are going to have both short and long term, so, you know, it's a whole different thing. The other thing is that for the hybrids, because that was a state mandated benefit, the pricing is, you know, for the entire group. So there's one rate, which is fifty-nine percent, oh, you know, point fifty-nine percent of the covered payroll, where for the existing Plan One and Plan Twos, it's really pretty much a separate product that we'd have to contract with. It might be that same company that provides the, for the hybrids, but they would be pricing it based on our group, and so everybody's ages and all that comes into play.
We've had, you know, a lot of time people use their sick leave and use their leave as it comes up and don't build up. The other element of that, though, is if we are providing that similar benefit to the hybrid employees, if this would make this more equivalent to the.
And that's why we're bringing it to you, because it does seem like it's a, I mean, what, you know, I can think of several people in the short time that I've worked here that have had to avail themselves of the use of the sick leave bank, and it's, you know, it's not a, it's hard to depend on that.
Kind of weigh in, there's a little bit of a difference. I mean, with all due respect, having a doctor, having someone go out on sick leave and coming in and getting access to a sick leave bank is way easier than someone getting approved for short-term and long-term disability, because you're going to have, it's going to be a third party. It's not going to be our HR company, I mean, HR department, saying, "Oh, yeah, you're on sick leave because the doctor wrote you a note." I mean, they actually, these third-party companies actually go through, you know, whoever we go with, very strenuously, and they follow up with you, and they are, you know, they are constantly, the doctors have to send in a report, and it can't be a doctor's note, you know, the person can't work for the next three weeks.
They gotta look at their medical records and all.
They give medical records, and so, really, to be honest with you, it's not something that is easily abused.
Okay.
Whereas, sick leave, you know, we've made it very clear, we found out, we don't follow up with, you can get a doctor's note that just says, you know, the person doesn't need to work for the next six months, and, you know, we're letting people, I mean, it is just, we don't have the capacity to, to.
We don't have the staff to follow up and monitor and say, "How are you feeling? Do you think you could come in part-time?" Or, "We have this other type of work that you might be able to do some filing."
Right.
And all those kinds of things are things that the insurance company would do on our behalf.
But don't we still have a substantial gap in service? I mean, if the long-term doesn't kick in till ninety, ninety-first day, I guess it is, you know, and people are short on both sick and annual leave, we still have two very different situations with respect to these two groups of employees. One has short-term disability that kicks in after a week or so, as well as the long-term. The other has no short-term, other than the sick leave and the sick leave bank.
That's why they would have the option to, you know, that's when they make a decision, are they going to opt into the new plan?
Well, they, and we're, one of the things, we had a compressed timeframe, because the clock was ticking on these hybrid employees and getting something on the books. As Abby points out, and something that we're going to look is, there's an underlying policy thing, do you want a paid time off universe where you don't have to lease it? It's maybe a little bit generous than the accruals, you want to hold the current employees harmless as far as all the time they've accrued. But we also have a potential where somebody could run through their leave balances accrued and available for use and not be available for long-term disability. And I think we can come back with a plan, but the immediate one is to get the hybrids taken care of, and maybe this long-term in place, and then figure out how to do an overall paid time off.
I'm wanting to wait till we got something before us on this second issue, but I would make the motion to approve the new policy for the hybrids.
A second.
All right, motion to second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries five zero. And then, I guess, on the other, you will provide us more information, and we'll discuss it at a later date.
Yes, sir, and I certainly don't want to miss the opportunity to, I guess, jab the General Assembly for yet another unfunded mandate that this board is having to wrestle with because of their desire to provide a benefit to employees.
One other thing I'd like to bring up is on the sick leave bank. If the sick leave bank is kept active, it's something that the county is allowing to be provided, there need to be some changes made to it so that there's a standard for usage of the sick leave bank and the donation or contributions to the bank, because the way it's set up currently is not necessarily a very equitable process. I was involved in another one for thirty years that, very specific, very fair, and works a lot better than what we currently have. So if it is kept, I think there needs to be some revisions whatsoever.
Okay. Additional public comment periods for Route Three strategic visioning.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, as you know, you've set out a framework to receive public input on the Route Three strategic visioning initiative. There are three additional public comment periods that take place at the upcoming board supervisors' meetings, and they're in your memo. And that is appropriate now for you to go ahead and schedule these if you so desire.
I have a question. We talked about the charrette, and we've got some dates for the charrette and the report out of the charrette. What about a public presentation of charrette results? We need to address that here, or can we address that elsewhere?
I would say, at this point, we may be able to take that April meeting and turn it into the report out. I think, I'd wait to hear from Ms. McClintock on her timing and when she's ready to do that, but the idea is that they'll inform the steering committee of their results, steering committee, and then she'll finalize a report, and then we'll schedule a public notice meeting to report those findings.
The other thing is, is we're making these public comments or coming into the board of supervisors consistent with our dates, our meeting dates. And I'm thinking of, we need to arrange for something with regard to when we schedule the steering group meetings, so that there's some opportunity for public input to the steering group, not just to the board. We may, since we don't have the steering group meeting scheduled, but I think we need to make sure that it's the steering group that also gets to hear these public comments, because normally the EDA members, the planning commissioner might hear some, but we need to get all six members hearing these inputs.
Mr. Frame, if I may make a suggestion for you and members of the board. If you remember, kind of the schematic is that we'll have the charrette, final report, and then the steering committee will start developing an area plan, and so maybe having some, you know, appropriate times during that development to receive input on the development.
That's fine, that's fine. I just didn't want to, I wanted, this is probably not the time to do it, because we didn't even know when those steering group meetings will be, but we need to make sure that we're advertising and letting people know that they have an opportunity to make an input to the people who are developing that plan.
Yes, sir. I guess the question I have is, do we know enough at this point to schedule beyond, let's say, the March twenty-fifth one? The March twenty-fifth one I could justify, because I think we're going to be coming off the charrette, and there'll be some information and press releases and a discussion underway that we could focus there. But as to whether we either know enough to fix a meeting or have a topic for it or replace a steering committee meeting beyond that, I'm not certain that we will. I guess the question I'm trying to get to is, how far in advance should we add a calendar item like this? Can we do it the meeting before, the month before, these kind of things, rather than stake out all the way into May at this point, with, given the fluid nature of the situation? I'm not violently opposed to scheduling all three, but it seems to me that we're in a better position to predict an interest at March twenty-fifth. I'm not sure beyond that. Mr. Chairman.
I would agree with that.
Yeah, Mr. White's observation is, I think, not having been here last summer, and the intent was to clearly mark to the, or give notice to the public that there is going to be probably an overabundance of opportunities to provide input to this process, and so I think the steering committee needs to be recognized with giving all those opportunities. What has happened is that there hasn't, the charrette's going to probably generate some more information, and so probably just scheduling one more immediately on the heels of the charrette is appropriate. And then we'll schedule when the final report is made, and then the steering committee can then maybe come up with a schedule of when they're. I think that's a better plan. So March twenty-fifth would be just the appropriate time.
So I would like the motion to schedule the Tuesday, March twenty-fifth, additional public comment period.
Okay, motion to second. Any further discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Kurt, are you here for any other reason except for what you have to do coming up?
Mr. Chairman, we've got a speed study request.
I know.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But.
I have one more, I have an item that's all information, and then if we're having any budget work session afterward.
Okay. Well, I just wondered if you were just waiting for that one particular thing I was going to, okay. Well, in that case, we'll go up to the speed study for Black Walnut.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, didn't mean to jump in there.
No, just like I said, if Ollie was sitting here, I'm gonna let him drive back to Pottentown. We'll make him hang around.
Oh, he's always engaged with these boys. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Patrick Bain with the president of the Black Walnut Run, Estates Homeowners Association contacted our office and is requesting a speeding, a speed study be done on Laurel Canyon Boulevard and Beach Drive. Staff has attached the necessary resolution to effect that request. I just point out that the request is a little different from our request for a speed study. They actually specifically say they're wanting speed bumps. I'm not sure that VDOT's going to do that anyway, but.
And it's not a through-street subdivision.
Right, and so, I, I'm not opposed to asking VDOT to do the speed study, but I'm concerned that VDOT's response is going to be, that's a little bit beyond our normal practice, and so it might be, rather than act on this, that we have some conversation with Mark or somebody at VDOT to see what the best approach is. I, again, I'm not opposed to this, but I don't know that there's a fit with the way that VDOT would normally do a speed study in this situation. Well, you're correct, they have criteria that has to be met in order for a speed bump, or traffic calming, I guess, improvements.
One of my concerns, we have a number of subdivisions and private subdivisions that are attempting to get VDOT to move forward with the traffic calming, as well as many other things. And quite honestly, I would prefer, unless it is a true safety issue at this point, to get VDOT to come take care of the roads in the county so that they're passable. Because I will tell you, I'll save that for another time, but I would like to see VDOT concentrate on safety issues rather than convenience issues. And if we continue to send in all these speed study requests and other requests that are wants rather than needs, I'm afraid VDOT's going to tell us when it comes to the needs, "Have a nice day." Because we're not getting the things that need to be taken care of in this county taken care of by VDOT.
And I think one of these roads, I'm not certain, by the time I saw this, I didn't get a chance to drive out there, but I think one of these is a dead-end road.
Absolutely.
So it's neighborhood traffic only. And that doesn't make it any better or any safer.
No, but that.
It changes VDOT's view of it, I feel pretty confident, so. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, if I make a suggestion, perhaps not, I was here the inclination to maybe request a speed study, and there's a cost to it. I mean, VDOT's going to have a cost incurred with it. It's perhaps, I see Mr. Zodi back there, is perhaps work with this president of the homeowners association, maybe get VDOT just to go out there and take a look at it, and then be able to kind of answer the question of, you know, speed bumps and what warrants those.
As far as the speed study goes, I believe the speed limit's twenty-five in the subdivision, correct?
And they're not going to do anything with that.
Right, so the speed study is null and void. Right.
I guess my recommendation is, rather than take action on this tonight, let's do a little bit more work and see what. Let's get VDOT with the homeowners association, and I know Mr. Zodi knows his way to.
I'm sure that they contacted VDOT, and VDOT says the county has to do a resolution. If it's twenty-five miles an hour, if that's the speed, there is no speed study needed.
No, precisely.
Well, and I think probably one of the other things is, VDOT will say if you want, they won't install speed bumps or these calming devices unless they're warrants, as they call it, and because of certain liability issues. And so maybe getting everybody informed as to what you would need to have done in order, what condition needs to be in place before you can get speed bumps in, which way you can take a speed study.
Okay, so we'll leave this one lay until we get more information.
Yes, sir, just taking it under advisement.
Okay, so then we'll come up to the leasing of the airport terminal space.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. You have a memo in front of you that, on second thought, I wish I'd reworded a little bit. To recap, Skyline Aviation is interested, they approached us, they're interested in leasing the office portion of our old terminal building. My recommendation in the memo is that the board approve that. What I wish I would have said in the motion, the motion states that it would be for a term of no more than two years. I'd like to add to that, that, or explains to the board, we haven't, staff and Skyline has, we've not sit down to negotiate a price. The price that's mentioned in my memo and in their letter was initiated by them. Quite honestly, I do believe it would be a benefit for the airport, but I'd like to find out if they would be willing to pay a little more than what they're offering. So, having said all that, I would suggest changing the motion to state that, in addition to the term being for no more than two years, it would be no less than the monthly fee that they propose to pay. And if we can get more, that's what I'd like to try and negotiate with them. That make sense?
I don't know, if you put it in the motion, doesn't that become a floor that they?
And is there a reason for no more than two years? Would there be an option for additional term to it?
Well, the two years was a term that they suggested, and I don't want to speak for Mr. Lashley, but if we get to a longer term. Well, the two years was a term that they suggested, and I, I don't wanna speak for Mr. Lashley, but i- if we get to a longer term arrangement, then that may require some additional actions. I, I don't know, I, I'm.
Were they planning on? Were they planning on doing any improvements in the room, or they're just gonna take it as is?
They've, they've, um, stated in their letter that they would make interior improvements, the space, uh, painting, drywall repairs, uh, some cleaning, even though w- we do still, Public Works still cleans that facility, but we don't do it as often as we used to when it was occupied.
But they're not gonna be investing a lot of money in it, that you don't think?
No.
Because sometimes you'd give them a longer period if they were putting some, some real money.
I, I don't think it's a substantial amount of money.
Kurt, one other question for you, when you say the office space, is this everything except for the hangar?
Yes, sir.
The old, the old piles terminal and.
Right.
All that, yeah.
What, do you know what the approximate square footage is of, of the space they're interested in? I, I've been in there, but it's been a long time.
It's probably about twelve hundred square feet.
I gotta say twelve to fourteen hundred square feet.
A- and currently, like I, last, right, right now, we, we've, we don't have any use for that space, with the exception being that the, uh, firm that's renting the, uh, hangar does have access to the restrooms that are part of this space, so that would be a shared uh, space between the two tenants, but.
Who pays the utilities on this?
Public Works does. It, it comes out of my budget every month.
Will they pi- pick up the utilities then?
Well, that's something maybe we can negotiate with them as well. The, the challenge may be that, that facility's on one meter, so currently Public Works is paying the the electricity and the water and sewer for that building. And, and I don't have a way to split the cost between the tenant and the hangar and the other, but we can pro-rate something, we, we can can certainly negotiate that.
So your, your lease on the hangar is basically a straight lease with us covering the utilities?
Yes, sir.
Used space is better than vacant space.
You got it.
And a fast nickel is better than a slow dime.
Yep, and, and I will say that flight school has grown very quickly. The flight instructor is exceptional, and as far as I can tell, she doesn't have plans on going anywhere else.
Well, then I take the motion.
Well, what, can I suggest instead of the two years, we just say on an annualized basis?
Me, if, that, that works for me.
Then we can just, we can make a lease, it's got an annual renewal term that everybody, either so I can give a sixty day notice and then we're not hemmed in by that two years, but it's actually a one-year lease, so we don't have any public hearing issues. So instead of just the two years, I would just say, suggest leasing the old terminal, uh, on an annualized basis instead of for a term of two years.
Well, then I will make that motion with the, um, recommendations of, um, the county attorney and public works director to allow him the opportunity to negotiate a, um, different rate to include, um, covering the utility costs and
Correct.
and such for the leased space, and that it would be a yearly lease that would allow them to renew as long as everybody's.
I'd second it, but I'm not sure.
I'm not even sure what I'm motioning because it, I will agree, it worked very well.
You're right.
Okay, motion to second, any further discussion?
I, I'd just like to see at least out.
I would too, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
You'll make it so. All right. We have a fee donation request from Orange Baptist Church.
Yes, sir, um, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, uh, Orange Baptist Church, uh, is having, uh, like, uh, fee donation for tipping fees with landfill associated with Mission Madness event taking place on March eighth. And as I understand it, this is, uh, come to the customary process of these type of, uh.
So moved.
Seconded.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Five oh, okay. And item seven F, request to restrict truck traffic going six forty-six.
Yes, um, several years ago, this is, um, a issue that was brought up, um, with the, um, residents of Lover's Lane Road, um, to restrict truck traffic from, from cutting through, um. I, I will tell you after spending some time today with, um, Roy Tate and Mark Mesbit, um, this is just the beginning of something that might not even go very far, um. That, I didn't realize, but, well, I mean, it's obvious, there's, there's criteria you have to meet in order to restrict through traffic, and you, you, you know, they come out and they have to measure the road and they look and see how many trucks come through there, and they, you know, there, there's, there's so many moving parts, no pun intended, um, that before they can even say whether or not it's something that should go for, or we could say it's something that should go forward. Plus now we gotta realize half of the, the road is in one county, in Alton Rock County, the other half of the road is in Orange County. It would require a public hearing in Alton Rock County and a public hearing in Orange County. So before we go that far, we need to even know if, if we need to go further. Um, so we need to, um, have consensus among the board that, um, the request come from the board for VDOT to look at, to do a study out there to actually see if the road even meets, um, the criteria for, um, restricting through traffic, through that residential area.
What was Mark's response today?
That the board needed to send a request for, uh.
So he, he didn't have a suggestion?
That the board needs to send a request to see if it even meets the criteria. I mean, they, they, they're very clear on what they, what they can and can't do, and they look at the condition of the road and they look at, I, I mean.
How much of the traffic, uh, is internal, how much is just truck, run through? I mean, I, we've talked about that when we looked at six oh one, I've had people trying to, uh, to do that on flat run, and, uh.
I mean, he did say it's, 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 it's really hard to restrict through traffic and, 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 and basically, I, I, I wish I could remember the exact term that he said, um, roads, I'm trying to think how he used it. Roads mains, roads main job are for traffic, you know, it, that's, that's.
That's why you have a road.
That's why you have a road, and, and I don't remember the exact term that he used, but it was, I wish I remembered because it was, you know, it kinda made sense, you know? Their, their job is to, is to get, keep traffic flowing, so, um.
Stay close.
I, I've, a couple of times that people have, uh, talked to me, I just say, here's the manual, why don't you go look and see if this thing, if, if this, this even, you know, even if you can, you can meet the criteria there, I mean, just looking at it from your standpoint, uh, is, is, is one way, and, and they say, you know, well, isn't that what VDOT's supposed to do? And I said, yeah, but I gotta, I gotta commit a lot of resources, and why don't you see if it's even feasible? And look at the manual, and that pretty much turned it off.
Yeah, I guess the question I have, could, could, did, did he, did Mark give you the indication he can take this first step without a huge commitment of resources? It's a, it's a fairly quick and easy look.
What, what happens is, you know, um, when you were making your comment earlier, one of the things he explained to me, you have traffic division, you have engineering division, you have, and everybody has their.
Different groups.
Their different groups, so, you know, one group does the studies, one group does the, you know, work, what maintenance, one group does the engineer, I mean, so, and each group has their own little, um, their own little thing, um. It, they basically, they, they'll do a traffic count out there, and they, they, they look at history of accidents on the road, and they, I mean, so they do, uh, the way it sounded like, it's an in-depth analysis of it, um, and, and, you know, one of the things that we were just talking about very generally here is, um, we've got a lot of truck traffic, or we have a lot of speeders, and i- in your perception, is it a lot? Is it not a lot? Um, I will know, I know that, I know several people that live down there, um, dump trucks cut through there a lot. And, um, it, it's mainly dump trucks that are cutting through, so, you know, then, then we also talked about the problem with the traffic circle in Gordonsville, because that hard stop right there, it backs up traffic on, um, you know, coming down High Street, or, and that's what we talked about, is it times of the day that there's a spike, because people know that going through the town of Gordonsville, um, you know, it, it's hard for them because they have to do that hard stop, um, going into the circle, so it, you know, trucks don't like to stop, they like to keep rolling, so, um, it, 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 in order for them to even go any further, they, they, they have to do this part of it, it just, he can't, he can't look at it and take a guess and, and say whether or not.
There's no common sense with VDOT, I'm sorry, they, when they spoke when I was in Richmond.
The government, I think.
And, and the classic example, I, their monies are allocated, in my opinion, in the wrong areas. Too much of their monies are spent on bureaucracy instead of keeping our roads safe, and.
Anyway, guys, I would like for you all to support that, um, and that we go forth and be prosperous and have them look at it and then we can go to the next step. If there is a next step.
I guess there, there are certain criteria that they, that, and in other words, they don't necessarily have to do the whole study, they get to a certain point and say, oops, no, no further.
I mean.
And, and I, I guess, uh, uh, I guess we ought to ask them to look at it. I mean, if, uh, you know, nothing else, uh, when it gets turned down, I can deal with that with my people.
All right, I have a motion to approve, uh, second.
Second.
Motion second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, next, appointments to boards, commissions and committees.
Oh, I got one. Uh, Bob McConnell would like to remain on, um, the economic, um, development.
Excellent choice. Okay. Any other appointments before we get to Brian's?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I sent a request to the board, um, last week.
Oh, yes.
Y'all come now.
For George Allman on the local Board of Building, um, Code Appeals.
Yeah.
The building department, um, staff has been in contact with him, he's a structural engineer and he's qualified to serve and willing to serve if the board so chooses to appoint him.
All right, I'll make that motion, we nominate him then.
Second.
Okay. Um, any other ones? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and now, sir?
Thank you, I received a letter, uh, beginning of the month from, uh, Dr. Sam at Germana. There's a rotating board, uh, college board seat that is now Orange County's turn to have this seat. Currently, Mr. Doug Rogers serves as the Orange representative, and his term will go through June thirtieth, twenty fifteen. The second position will start a term July first through June thirtieth, twenty eighteen. Uh, Dr. Sam recommends that this should be somebody well-known who's representative of the business and professional leaders in the county. Uh, there's other meeting details, their timeline is desire to complete this new appointment as soon as possible for an effective date of July first, twenty fourteen, so whoever serves in that is really up to you all, uh, those decisions.
I talked to Doug Rogers today, he's been out trying to recruit somebody, he's been looking at some people here in Orange, uh, that, uh, he thought might be interested, and he's still, he's still trying to find somebody who would, who would meet this criteria.
When do they meet?
They meet, uh, third Thursday at four.
Every other month, except they usually don't meet in July, which is when the term begins.
You may wanna come to help contact our business spotlight from tonight.
What?
Business spotlight from this evening, maybe someone to contact.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll ask, uh, uh, I'll ask Doug to give him a call.
Thank you.
Cause he's, he's been trying to find somebody. Okay.
All right, okay.
And if he hasn't found somebody, he may be a, be a next one.
Discussion items?
Nothing.
Any question on the information items?
Mr. Chairman, if there's two, two things, I just wanna make sure, uh, to bring to board's attention, uh, Mr. Hildebrand, the county attorney, and, uh, uh, Stephanie are going through the process of the RFP for the landfill operator. This is, uh, obviously one, a, a significant, um, solicitation, uh, for that operator, and the idea is to, uh, bring back a qualified, uh, proposal for your consideration late May, if you're making so. And the second item is just to toot Chief Harkness's horn, uh, he was invited to, uh, uh, come and help, uh, Emory Riddle Aeronautic University, um, concerning a fire and science advisory committee meeting, and, uh, I received a letter from Dr. Ronald Waitman thanking him, I thought the board would wanna know that.
All right. Anything on the committee reports?
Yeah, I'd like to ask, uh, Jim, how does he get all this money out of the, uh, out of the corporate, what, what is, I mean, just what, what is involved? Uh, I'm, I'm interested in just the technical aspects of what's involved for these kinds of, uh, grants.
You, you have creeks on your farm that flow into Lake Anna.
Uh-huh.
And they, and they basically dictate what you can do and not do. And there's, there's cost sharing funds from the state, basically to put in, uh, alternative water. They do, they don't want the animals to do what they've done.
Yeah, forever.
Forever, which is go drink out of a creek, so you have to dig a well, bring in power, fence off the creeks, all these kinds of.
All those things, and this is.
And they cost share a, a portion of that.
Okay, all right.
And, and it's essentially not a voluntary program if your, if your water flows into Lake Anna.
Okay.
And I, I hope to have several more because.
Currently a funded mandate, but.
Partially.
Partially.
Partially funded mandate.
But at least the county doesn't have to pick up the rest of.
No, no, this.
You do.
I do, right.
Okay, all right.
That's what it is.
That's, all right, that's, that's all I wanna know.
All right, last thing then would be calendar, rescheduling the Biennial Strategic Planning Retreat.
Do we need to, uh, you know, I guess the others, uh, the meetings for the charrette, do we need to put that on there as well?
Yeah, those are already been scheduled.
Okay.
So, uh.
So, do we need a motion for that, or?
Yes, sir.
So moved.
Have a motion, second, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Oh.
Just so the minutes reflect, this is rec- canceling it, uh, for the fifteenth, sixteenth of February and rescheduling it for the fourteenth and fifteenth of March. Strategic planning retreat. Thank you.
All right, while we're following regular business, are, are you distributing things yet, or are we doing that later, or are we going on directly?
We can do that now, uh. Mr. Bradley's got a box.
Uh. Hey, they're smaller.
That's cause there's less money to spend.
There you go.
I think the print is smaller, that's the problem.
God, I hope not.
We're in trouble then.
Oh, that's so funny. Did it say one sheet of paper?
These are strictly just the printout out of the computer system, so you will be getting much more than this, but, um, this is just, you know, more.
Oh, so we have to do our own interpretation of it, huh?
These are the base numbers that we are developing a presentation.
All right.
As you Bradley said, that these are the MUNIS reports, I think these are new reports this year, Glenda? This is a new format for the reports for everybody.
Right, these are the MUNIS reports, and I tried to get the best combination of choices I could, so that, uh, my, the variances that are showing, um, the percentage changes are based on the original budget for FY fourteen, not the revised budget, so just keep it that in mind, and on these reports, uh, the original budget is shown there, so you won't have trouble following the, the map.
Could you not have made the first section thicker and the second section thinner?
More revenue, less expenditures.
Yeah, there's, there's another binder for that one, uh, which reminds me, I'm, as you all know, I'm scheduled to meet with each review, uh, prior to Thursday to go over, uh, I met with the chairman this afternoon, Glenda and I, and I think he now has a, an understanding of my, 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 uh, my work, uh, and then Thursday will be the formal presentation of the information that I will share with you individually between now. Uh, and then Thursday will be the formal presentation of the information that I will share with you individually between now and then.
Okay. With that then, uh, yes, closed meeting, I assume?
Okay.
Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Orange County desires to discuss in closed meeting the following matter, consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual probable litigation where such consultation open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of public body and consultation with legal counsel employee retained by the public body regarding specific legal matters, requiring a provision of legal advice by such counsel. And whereas pursuant to section two point two thirty seven eleven A seven of the Code of Virginia, such discussions may occur in closed meeting. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Orange County is hereby authorized discussion of the four said matters in closed meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So, there it goes, sixty-five, baby.
A what?
Okay.
All right, to the best of your knowledge, where the only matters discussed in the closed meeting, public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed or considered in the closed meeting. Roll call.
Mr. Goodwin?
Aye.
Mr. Crozier?
Aye.
Mr. Crane?
Aye.
Mrs. Ann?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye. Okay. Uh, that brings us up to the public comment period for Route Three Strategic Visioning Initiative, do we have anybody signed up?
No, sir, Mr. Goodman.
Open, close, okay. Uh, we'll go into recess till seven o'clock when we have.
That was, uh, one of the former seventy.
I see a red light over there.
Sir, would you please address both your proposed amendments?
Yes, sir, uh, this, this amendment has been ongoing issue with planning for quite some time. It's regarding the existing road standards in fifty-four dash one sixty-seven of the subdivision ordinance. Um, previously, if, uh, someone was to create a new road through the subdivision process and there are created more than two lots, uh, the, the code, um, required them to build a private road to state standards. State standards is mentioned in the subdivision ordinance by reference. Staff has felt for some time that that was a very, some punitive, uh, requirement if you're only building, say, three or four lots and you had to build it to twenty-four to twenty-six foot wide, uh, width. Um, so what staff came up with, um, after a year or so of working kind of on and off on this issue, uh, staff sent something to the chief, uh, Chief Harkness regarding what the requirements are for a, a private road. And staff also looked up in the state fire code and it's, uh, ranges from sixteen feet to twenty-one feet. Uh, Chief Harkness, and I asked Chief Harkness what the emergency vehicles were and they were eight and a half feet, uh, with no mirrors, with the mirrors folded. And so the requirement technically would be for two sa- uh, first responder vehicles passing each other fire apparatus, uh, that you'd need seventeen feet. Well, staff just cut it down a little bit to sixteen feet and we moved it forward to the planning commission and, on the public hearing on October third. Planning commission then reduced that figure from the twelve feet and some other language that staff pulled together. Uh, they cut it from sixteen feet to twelve feet, uh, they removed the slope requirement because typically the state won't take in certain roads if they exceed a particular grade. It varies from state to state, but I believe ASHTA standards, which is national standard, uh, for engineers, transportation engineers usually recommends between eight and ten or eight and eleven slope restriction. Uh, they also, uh, one of the members also changed, uh, item number, uh, two point three, uh, to add that gravel road shall consist of a minimum of six inches of aggregate and paved road shall consist of a minimum of six inches of gravel and asphalt. So, we're not requiring, you know, we're giving people, uh, property owners the option to either do gravel, six inches of gravel, or six inches of a, uh, composite aggregate.
Why'd he get rid of the compacted?
Um.
Who got rid of compacted?
I, uh, I believe it was Mr. Hutchison who recommended that because, and actually, I think, uh, Andy had suggested it and the other members discussed a little bit and asked me if I was equipped to go out and do compaction tests. And I don't have that equipment, I'm not being facetious, I just don't have the equipment, it'd be an impractical requirement for subdivision agent. Um, and they did stay, they did stick with staff, uh, recommendation of, uh, providing adequate drainage and all culverts shall be constructed and installed to VDOT standards. Uh, some of the other a- aspects were addressed at a second public hearing meeting, uh, on October seventeenth. Um, let me probably go too deep, staff realized after the original public hearing on October third that we omitted a few items specifically identifying, uh, family subdivisions in this equation because the genesis of all this came down to a particular family, the Carls. And, uh, it's kind of silly for us to move forward with updating our ordinance without addressing, correcting fifty-four dash twenty-eight, which is the family subdivisions. Uh, so we can keep the family subdivision requirements for private roads in alignment with the general requirement for the county residents. So, we came back and, um, add, made that amendment, that's in Division Four. And that was on the seventeenth, uh, the seventeenth I was suggesting by the planning commission. We held a public hearing November twenty-first that revised the family subdivision, struck items eleven and thirteen, so it's in alignment with our proposed amendment. And it also created, well, they amended item four fifty-four dash one sixty-seven, which states, um, any road created to serve eight or more lots or any other subdivision road as so desired by the property owner shall be constructed to meet the Virginia Department of Transportation's street requirements. So, it's basically saying, once you exceed that threshold of seven for a minor, anything greater than seven lots, you have to comply, which is a reasonable standard, in my opinion. And finally, we added something that should have been in there for a long time, which is the covenants. That's fifty-four dash one sixty-seven dash five. Covenants outline the responsibility of construction and maintenance of any private right-of-way created to serve a subdivision shall be submitted, submitted to the county attorney for review with a plat of said subdivision and subsequently recorded with said subdivision plat upon approval. Now, the, the reason I wanted to emphasize this is that in our current ordinance, we do not have any requirement of submitting a road maintenance agreement. We do though for family subdivisions, whether there's an omission on the previous administrator's parts or not, we needed to get this in here. So, there's that, that predictability factor for the homeowners, when they're buying in a subdivision, they're going to have to agree to this road maintenance agreement. Cause I'm, I'm trying to steed off some public blowback in the future. And finally, the last item they heard was Division Five final plats. And we just want to reference the fact that such streets will be constructed and maintained in accordance with standards set forth in section one fifty-four dash one, fifty-four dash one sixty-seven, which is a certification that goes on the final plat. So, there's going to be two places where they're going to know that, that, that these roads will be, the, the, the responsibility would be upon the individual lot owners maintaining the roads.
Does that show up on the individual home plat? This statement, or just on the subdivision plat?
On the overall subdivision plat.
So, there is nothing that, when a guy buys this, there's nothing to force disclosure of the fact that he's responsible in part for maintaining the road?
I think he would have to enter into the road maintenance agreement.
What's that?
The covenants, at the, the paragraph five, the, the.
Okay, so the covenants have covered.
Yes.
So, there'd be a restrictive covenant that would.
Now, the, uh, what in the co- how do you write the covenants such that you make sure that, that the road gets maintained?
We, we currently have a template for that and we brought that to the planning commission's agenda, um, attention and I think it's just, well, I, actually.
I would just, I'd ask Tom, what, what would you be looking for to make sure that, uh, that the, uh, majority wants to fix the road, that the minority has to pay its share?
Well, I mean, you can, that, typically, that's what it says, it simply says if there's any expenses required, then every lot owner that's served by this road will pay a pro rata share of whatever's required. Um, there, there's no law that says, I mean, theoretically, developer could say, well, I'll pay for the road. In fact, in the planning commission, somebody mentioned that, somebody had a road and he wanted to take care of it himself and he didn't want anybody else touching it, if, if he had developed it. So, it isn't technically required that it be equal or pro rata, you could, you know, they can, as, all we're concerned about is that it gets fixed and there's a system in place for taking care of it.
Well, I'm just saying, even if the covenant says that you're responsible for a share, unless you have a homeowners association or some organization that gets together and makes it happen, cause there are other places that have these, uh, covenants and nothing gets done. Uh, unless there is some organization that says, okay, the four homeowners have gotten together or there's a, uh, it's authorized that four can get together and say, the other three have to pay for it.
But it's hard to pass a law that makes neighbors be neighborly.
I know that.
And so, the, this, this puts the tools in place so that if somebody wants to push the issue, they can.
They can go to court.
They can go to court, you, I mean, you can go, you can file a civil action and ask a judge to enforce the, the covenants and then the judge will enter an order saying you shall pay one-fifth or one-sixth or one-seventh of, of this, this maintenance.
But often, I mean, they come to county looking for the county to do the enforcement.
Well, that's.
And they may not have had road and maintenance agreement when they purchased a property and there may not have been.
I'm, I'm sure a lot of them did, but, uh, but I know that, uh, there are plenty of places that have homeowners association and nobody fixes the roads.
Well, and that's. That's the thing is, we can't, we can't, we can't and don't really care about the ability to force it. What we want to do is have a mechanism in place that if the homeowners among themselves want tool to do it, they've got the tool in place.
So, I'm just thinking of hypothetically, uh, I think the roads are a bunch, are in bad shape, the other guys don't. But I go out and contract for, uh, you know, eighty thousand dollars to get it fixed, uh, you know, do the, uh, do I get, uh, reimbursed by the other six homeowners?
You'll go to court and ask a judge to say yes and judge will, if he felt like what you did was reasonable, he's going to enter an order against you.
So, it's, it's a reasonable check that the court has a chance to look at, okay.
All right, well, thank you.
You're welcome.
I will open the public hearing, no speakers? Close the public hearing, damn, I'm getting slow in my old age.
I think you have to think before she even has to say no.
Uh, I saw the words coming out of her mouth.
No, no, I'm just saying, you're, you're, you think you're slow.
I, I'd already asked, so.
I know.
I move we, uh, adopt this amendment.
I, I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
I can do it in discussion if you'd like.
I'll do it in discussion.
Yep, I'll take a second, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion in a second, any further discussion, Jim?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
The, first of all, just a question, I notice in, uh, two cases, we define something as a, uh, minor subdivision and then a major subdivision.
Yes, sir.
Have we defined that in our ordinance anywhere else as part of definitions?
Yes. It's, it's under subdivisions definition.
It's under subdivisions, okay, I didn't see it in the ordinance, that's why I was wondering, okay.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
In, okay, second point on, on that number five that we were just talking about. It uses the term at the end of the first line, right-of-way, maintenance of any private right-of-way created. And that gave me pause, I, are we, are we talking about the right-of-way, are we talking about the road surface, are we talking about ditches?
I can, I can give you the definition for that, um, from.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we're, especially if this happens, if this gets contested, as it surely will. Do we, do we know what we're talking about there?
Yes, a right-of-way is defined as, uh, a means, uh, means either a strip or other parcel of land owned by VDOT or others for the purpose of constructing and maintaining a road. And this, or others.
But then I get, then I do ask my question, this is constructions and maintenance of any private right-of-way.
Cause theoretically, the right-of-way could be impacted and it isn't technically the road, somebody puts a barrier in the right-of-way. And so that it isn't a road issue, but they've put something that's a barrier and there might be some maintenance that needs to be done to, for example, they planted a tree that now has got branches that are so low that you can't get your vehicles.
Or tree has fallen over on it.
Or tree has fallen over, so it isn't technically a road maintenance issue, but it is a right-of-way issue. And so the, the broader term of right-of-way says that you're going to have a maintenance agreement that says we're going to keep access, right-of-way access clear, whether it's road maintenance or some other issue.
Yeah, it could be like an east.
But it includes, it includes the road maintenance, that was really my question.
Right, right-of-way includes the road maintenance, it's all, right-of-way includes all of the access requirements, whether it's the road or blockage or, or some other issue that could come.
Okay, all right, I, I, that's, that's what I wasn't sure. And also, in that line, it has responsibility of construction and, and maintenance? For, maybe? Just as a minor thing, it, 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 it's made me stumble a couple of times.
Okay, we can, it's a four.
I, I don't know what you meant, but.
We can.
Outlining the responsibility of construction and maintenance versus responsibility for constructions and maintenance. I'm not sure if it makes that difference.
I, I.
Ask a lawyer.
Yeah, ask the lawyer, that's right.
I, I don't think it makes a difference, but four sounds better to an English major.
Or not. But, my last question on.
I feel like very funny, I'm sorry.
This is a golf putt.
My, my last question, in, in state code or anywhere else, are there any standards with respect to maintenance that we should be aware of or thinking about?
On private roads, no.
So, okay.
Well, if, if neighbors wind up in litigation, what a court is going to look at is that, that nebulous word reasonable, reasonable access, reasonable maintenance.
And there's nothing we can or should do.
Right, cause.
Other than, than just let them go to the, and let the courts deal with it.
My first three weeks in torts in law school was discussing what's reasonable, what's a reasonable person.
And let me guess, y'all were still discussing it?
No one knows. That's why lawyers like that word.
All right, I'm good to go.
I mean, my only, um, question that I'm going to ask is a question that, um, Sharon Handek and I have talked about one time before. Um, and, and it's just a, it's just a throwing it out there, why are you differentiating between family subdivisions and regular subdivisions? Because at the end of the day, it's still a subdivision.
Okay, that's why we amended it, so we're treating both family subdivisions the same as regular subdivisions.
Okay, good, okay, cause I was reading something there for a second, it threw me off, okay, there you go.
I'm sorry for the confusion.
I'm sorry, that, no, that's okay, that was just, I just read it differently then.
And one other point I mentioned, this, this is all looking forward, this, this does nothing to look back to our existing road situation at all, this is all, just so we.
Moving forward.
We all understand it.
All we can do is on future subdivision requests, we can't do anything on an existing subdivision.
Right.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, cool.
Okay, I have a motion in a second.
Is the motion with the word for or the word of?
Of, is what I vote.
Of is what's there now.
I, I really just asked the question, if it matters.
Since of is legally okay, I'll stick with my original.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Motion five zero.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.